All right, I'm going to call our weekly work session to order. Start off with recognizing members of the administration that are present.
Safety Service Director Renee Baker.
Here.
Assistant Law Director Edmund Mack.
I'm here.
Director of Development Ted Hearn-Kane.
Here.
Parks and Rec Director Steve Pedro.
Here.
And Income Tax Budget Director Lori Cottigies Warren.
Yes.
Is there anyone from Administration? Okay. City Engineer Alex Pitts.
Here.
Now, is there anyone I missed? That's it, Mr. President. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Diane. Let's record show we have eight members of council present. Councilman Ray is not present this evening. Start off with Community Development, Mrs. Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have a few items this evening. So while I'm starting to go over the three items, Mr. Hearn-Kane, you can kind of make your way up here. So the first one is we received the Community Development Block Grant Program Budget for the 2025 program year. The term for this is from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. It states the main objectives of the CDBG programs is to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, to promote a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunity. Also, these funds can be used for neighborhood improvement activities such as demolitions and public infrastructure. We have a budget dollar amount of $752,222. Twenty percent of this, of these funds cannot exceed, excuse me, administrative expenses cannot exceed 20% of these funds. Public service activities cannot exceed 15% of these funds. And at least 70% of these funds must benefit low-to-moderate income persons. Take it away, Mr. Hearn-Kane.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. As I said in weeks before, when it comes to HUD and the federal government, this is one of those years where things are a little odd. We're basing our, this is an estimated grant amount of 651, 742. That's actually the same amount that we received last year or for the current year that we are in. When Congress passed the continuing resolution to fund the federal government through the rest of the federal fiscal year, which is the end of September, I believe. If you look at that resolution, it has the same dollar amount, approximately $3.4 billion for CPD grant programs, which CDBG is. So I think it is a fair assumption, if that is the same amount in the resolution, which was the same amount last year, that our allocation should be approximately the same. We do make some exceptions in our action plan whereby, when the final allocation amount comes out, we will adjust our budgeted items up a percentage or down a percentage based on the change that would come with the final allocation. But as I did say last time, we cannot submit the action plan until the final allocation is out. So by the time we submit our allocation, or our grant application, we will know what that amount is. There were some unused funds from the '23 fiscal year, which would have been the second half of '23, the first half of '24, of the tune of about $98,000. That came from leftover CD admin funds that were saved due to combining the Economic Development and Community Development Director positions into one. There were some code enforcement funds that were not spent. We had Jimmy Johnson, who retired at the end of '23. So we had some of those funds. There were two sub recipients that either went out of business or merged with others, and we didn't expend those funds. And there was one or two other things. So there are some significant funds that we can roll over from a prior year, which gets us to the 752, 222. The majority of the funds are put in the housing program for emergency repair and home rehabilitation. We are budgeting some additional, or some money again this year for the demolition program. We've increased the allocation to Maslin Main Street so they can do more improvements in our downtown business district. Habitat for Humanity has a new program called Preserve a Home, which we're actually kind of excited to see how that works. Instead of building a new home, what they do is they buy foreclosed properties, put them into productive use, which I think is a win for all of us. We don't want to tear houses down. Our code enforcement officers have actually been working very diligently, working with half a dozen or so quality landlords in the area that we want to help them acquire more properties. So the Preserve a Home program is one that we felt worthy of putting some funds toward to see how that works, and maybe that will grow in years to come. The Planning and Admin and Fair Housing line, 10,000 of that, 95,000 is going to go to the Fair Housing program. And as you can see, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, about 10 sub recipient organizations that are not new. We funded these organizations, some for a very, very long time, some for just a couple of years, but there are no new nonprofit organizations in the fold this year. And these dollar amounts are all pretty comparable to what we did for the current program year.
I have one question regarding the local agency projects. I know we talked before, you know, there's a need in my ward for transportation of seniors. And I believe it was mentioned that one or two of these agencies do provide transportation. Can you point out which ones would provide transportation to seniors so I can communicate that?
Sure. There may be just one, I know there is one for sure, and that's the Faith in Action Elderly, well, now it's the In-Home Caregiver, it used to be the Elderly Caregiver Program. But the Faith in Action Services for Seniors does provide free transportation to medical appointments, personal errand, shopping, banking to seniors who need that transportation option. I thought there may have been a second one, I might have been incorrect, but I know there is one for sure that primarily does that.
Okay, perfect. Does anyone from council have questions? Yes, Ms. Harwick-Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. As far as for the local agencies, those numbers are fixed. As far as the CDBG activities, if we would have the need to adjust funds, is that possible? Or is because this is government, once we say, like, say we were putting, you know, 437,000 into the housing, if we needed more money in demolition, do we have that ability to move it? Or whatever we put here, is that, that's where it stays? Because it's a government program?
That's a very good question. Through our Required Citizen Participation Plan, if we want to change any budgeted activity once it's approved by more than 50% or so, we have to go through a public process where we come back to council, we put ads in the newspaper, we have a public hearing, it's a whole thing we have to do if we were to do that. We don't do it very often, but occasionally, if we need to, there's a mechanism where we can, and you will know about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry to hear about your father, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. As I look at this list, the Stark Fresh In-Home Delivery Service, what is that exactly? Is that transportation available?
No. They will, they don't transport individuals, but what they do provide is they have an online ordering system where they will deliver fresh groceries to a person's home.
Thank you.
So it's the reverse of not taking people somewhere, it's bringing stuff to them.
Do we know, is there like a delivery fee? Or is this money like helping reduce that delivery fee for those individuals in need?
I believe it's free to the individual. There may be some items that are discounted, maybe with an EBT card, but the funds primarily go to supporting that program, whether it be salaries or transportation costs or the items themselves.
Anyone else? Okay. You can just stay up there, because we're going to just keep rolling. Okay. So the next item I have is, at the March 12 meeting, the City Planning Commission recommended approval for the following rezoning request. So the address is 2240 17th Street Southwest. It is parcel 500176, which is a four-acre parcel located on the east side of 17th Street Southwest between Finefrock and Pigeon Run Avenue. The zone request is from R1 Single Family Residential to A1 Agricultural. The applicants are Brian and Tiffany Weaver, and they are requesting this rezoning to allow for keeping of animals in accordance to Chapter 1175, A1 Agricultural District of the City's Planning and Zoning Code. So, what do you, do you have anything else to?
I will say that the applicant Tiffany Weaver is present this evening. At the Planning Commission meeting last month, a notice was given to all the neighbors within a 300-foot radius of their property. No one came to that meeting, no one has expressed objections at any time throughout this. The neighbors, she did, the applicants did choose to do a signed petition of neighbors in the immediate area, and there seemed to be overwhelming support in that neighborhood for their rezoning change. The purpose is, they have a child, I believe, in 4-H, and they would like to keep some animals that, as you stated, Mrs. Creamer, would be in accordance with our city's codified ordinances.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
This is, this is one of my neighbors in Ward 5, and I will say, they are very, very good neighbors. They keep their property very nice, they have gardens, and they just want to have a little chickens, and it, there's no one behind them but the Industrial One complex. All the neighbors in the area are supportive of it, and I hope everybody will vote for this. Tiffany has come here, if you want to ask her some questions, or have her just explain.
Sure. Ms. Weaver, please come forward. Is there going to be any new structure on the property?
No, nothing new, yeah. I just feel it's a benefit for my son to have that. I did 4-H when I was younger, and I really enjoyed it, and I just feel it's good for responsibility to learn, and our area is just, I feel it's more agricultural because we have such big lots. And then I don't golf, so I don't care to mow that much. I mean, I like to mow, but not that much. But, yeah, I, and like she says, I garden a lot, so we don't have a problem with the manure. Everything gets composted and used in the garden. At this point in time, I'm only looking at chickens and a turkey or two. My husband might want a goat, but I'm not looking at that anytime soon. But, I mean, yeah, I just, it's a benefit that I feel my son, I have a three-year-old too, that he would really enjoy doing 4-H as well with the animals, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Lewis.
This isn't for Ms. Weaver, but I'm thinking like forever-wise, if that makes sense. Is there any limitations to what type of livestock or animals would be able to be maintained on the property?
So, I don't have it memorized, but if you do look, there, the codified ordinances says that the animals that she mentioned, plus some others, you can have, if you have a minimum five-acre lot, with her lot being four, it's close, but not there, the minimum, so her only option was to rezone to agricultural, and the minimum acreage for agricultural zoning in the city is one acre. So the animal she talked about, there are some others, but I don't really have them memorized. We could look at the.
But we're not looking like 30 years from now, after they've sold the property or whatever, someone putting three cattle and a horse on there?
No, I don't believe that's.
Well, actually, with the ordinance, with like a quarter of an acre, you can have a horse.
A horse.
You can have a horse, but nothing else.
Okay.
But there's additional ordinance requirements where the stable or the structure that would house said horse has to be 200 feet or 300 feet away from a home, which in this instance still applies. If there were any structure to house the chickens, they would have to be 200 feet away from any other residential structure. So there's, there's some safeguards in there.
Again, I was only asking for like 2055, not 2025.
Mr. Gregg.
Just to follow up on, thank you, Mrs. Creamer, just to follow up on Mr. Lewis's question. I don't know, do we know if the UPMC that we just passed affects this in any way? It changes the code in any way?
No, I don't think so. Obviously, whether she zoned agricultural or not, she would still have to follow the maintenance requirements of the code that was just passed. There's no special exclusions or anything in the IPMC for this.
IPMC.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Weaver. All right. Our next, next item, please prepare legislation to transfer 13.427 acres of Outlot 681, currently owned by the City of Maslin, to the Maslin Community Improvement Corporation, the CIC, for purposes of economic development. The CIC will sell said property to Maslin Energy and Technology Parks, LLC, for a dollar. Maslin Energy and Technology Parks, LLC will then donate parcel 617095, which is an 11.28 acre vacant parcel to the City of Maslin, contingent on environmental study of the parcel. So.
Are your maps color or black and white?
Black and white. It's hard to see.
Yeah. Basically, what we're doing here is a property swap with the Maslin Energy and Technology Park. Garrett Klutz, the Vice President of METP, is present this evening and was present a couple of years ago, if you were on council, and you remember an executive session where we talked about this idea in general. The city owns the 13.427 acres of Outlot 681, which I believe is the first map that you have. It's a long, narrow piece of property that's sandwiched right in between two pieces of property that Maslin Energy and Technology Park owns. It's of no use to us. The piece on page two that they want to swap is comparable in size. It is actually sandwiched in between property that the City of Maslin owns, and the one benefit is, we're cleaning up a couple of things, and we're getting properties where they should be, instead of us owning a piece in the middle of their property and them owning a piece in the middle of ours. But the second thing is, it does benefit Maslin Energy and Technology Park for their future industrial development needs. It benefits the city by getting the parcel that they want to donate to us, because there's a sanitary sewer line that runs along the east side of that property, which would provide the city access and room to make needed repairs without requiring an easement and things like that. So in conversations with Mr. Klutz over the last several months, we feel that this is a mutually beneficial swap of what some could see as, just on the outset, as virtually unused or unneeded properties, but to each party, they do have some value, so we thought that we would get the ball rolling on this and do this transfer. We would transfer our parcel to the CIC, which would then conduct the transaction with Maslin Energy and Technology Park. The park would then donate directly to the city their parcel of property on page two.
Ms. Harwick-Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. So I see, like, our property, and I remember the maps were before, so when I'm looking here, our property basically off of Finefrock runs like in a line across, along the railroad? Am I looking at that right? That 13.27 acres like runs?
Are you on the first or second map?
I'm on the, I don't know, I guess, is that?
Oh, that, okay. So this went to, the reason that it's worded certain acres of Part Outlot 681 is, this went to the Planning Commission to be replanted at METP's expense, which we appreciate. This was approved by the Planning Commission, the replat is going to be filed with the county here in the next couple of weeks. That's why that doesn't say just a parcel number, but that is an accurate legal description. So your question, if you're looking at this map, we're looking at this sliver here where it says 13.427. It's the dark, bolded line that comes to about right there.
Okay.
Where that circle and the arrow is.
Okay. So then where is, and so this.
So on the east of that, and on the west of that is property that they already own.
Okay. So this is going to be zoned Industrial One, since everything else is zoned Industrial One through there?
It might even be I-2 out there, I'm not 100% sure.
I-2, Industrial Two?
So I think it is I-2.
I-2, yeah, full, okay, full Industrial, right?
Yep.
And then, so what I'm not seeing, where is the property that we will be getting, the city is obtaining on this? Is it on a different, I'm not?
So if you go to the second one, where the box is a little lower on the page, it looks a lot better in color, but it's basically a parcel that is split, a little triangle here up top above the highway, and then this parcel right below it here. So like right here and right here is all one parcel divided by the highway. And that is wedged in between property.
And that is Route 30 there, or is that 241?
30.
30, okay. And we are, are we, is that property, what kind of property can we use that for, that we're getting? It's really not going to be?
It's really not usable from our perspective. It's valuable to the engineering office, like I said, for that sewer easement, or that sewer line that actually is on both sides of the parcel for our ease.
So the parcel that gets useful for that, sorry.
Yeah, it provides access for the city to maintain.
Is it something that we, that could be used for anything, to build anything on? And we could obtain an easement if we sold it, or on it, if we, or it really has no use whatsoever?
Again, this is contingent on a clean environmental assessment, which they will provide. I don't know if it's very buildable. Looking at the map, I don't think that it is the location where one would want to put a structure. You have some access issues, clearly. There's no really roadway to get there. It's something that would be beneficial to us have solely for an infrastructure access standpoint.
Mr. Pakley.
Yeah, so with that infrastructure aspect of it, thank you, Mrs. Creamer, is that just for the sewer line, infrastructure access, correct?
I believe.
Basically, that property that the city would be getting is where the canal runs through, it's just a wetland area. So I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, but that's what it is.
Correct.
And that's where the old canal goes, it's right across the street, right across the river from the S.A. Recycling Center. And then?
And I did speak with the engineer's office earlier today. If we acquire this parcel, we, there's an option that we would want to replat that and parcel those all together, so we don't have three or four different parcels in one area. It's a logistical remedy.
And then there'll still be some land remaining from the initial parcel that 681, 148, because that's a 20-acre parcel, so there'll still be about, what, eight acres left?
There should be six or seven or so acres that the city would retain, and there's again, a sanitary or a storm's easement, or another sanitary line up there, too, that we would want to keep that property for.
I may have missed this, and I apologize, but in the beginning, what's their intended use for this property?
Well, their intended use, and I do not believe that there are any prospective industrial users to date, but what it does is it allows them to have access to more property that they can use for those purposes. It's kind of, having our, having the city own 13 acres right in between property they own is really not a good thing. It's not conducive for them, it's not conducive for us. We want them to sell that property, we want them to bring business in and increase our tax base and job opportunities for our people, et cetera. So from our perspective, this makes sense on a couple of different fronts.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Ryan, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Creamer. Mr. Hearn-Kane, was there a reason or rationale that the city owned the property in the first place historically? Did we need it for something?
I will say, I'm sure there was. God knows how long ago that we did this. If you look at what properties we own in that area, it's really, really bizarre. I can't decipher what the intent was, I don't know how we acquired them, or what the intended use was, but they're certainly of, this parcel's certainly of no use to us today.
And just to say that one more time, there's no easements needed, there's no infrastructure on that part, on the back part of that parcel, there are some things that we still need.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregg.
Thank you, Mrs. Creamer. The environmental study, it says contingent upon the environmental study of the parcel. Can you explain a little bit more what that is about, what the environmental study is looking for?
It's the same theory when some, when the theater company wanted to donate the parcel, buy the theater to the city, it was contingent upon a clean Phase I environmental assessment. Basically, it ensures that we don't want a dirty parcel. If there's any type of contaminants or any type of environmental remediation that would be needed, if that were the case, then the deal's off, right? In speaking with Mr. Klutz, they've had some environmentals done, just within the last year, maybe a year and a half, that still would be good. He's going to get those documents to us, and if it's clean, we'll take it, if it's not, we'll go to Plan B.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have for Community Development.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Creamer. Next, we have Economic Development, which would be either Mrs. Harwick-Smith or Mr. Pakley, if there's anything.
There's nothing for Economic Development this evening.
All right. Next, Health, Welfare, and Building Regulations. Councilwoman Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg, Councilman Gregg. We're back to our ordinance, 7, 8, 9, and 10. And Mr. Mack is here tonight, if there's any questions or more discussion on this, because this will be coming up for third reading. Mrs. Harwick-Smith?
Yes. Based on our previous discussions, just to look at it in order of ordinance number Ordinance number seven, we're removing on section 107.44, the sentence, "Each day violation continues, after due notice has been served, shall be deemed a separate offense." Upon discussing this, I almost, I think I would like to adjust it for when we vote on it, to change number four to, just I think it would be more compliant with our all-new set of fees and how we're doing things, so it's consistent. Instead of being a first-degree misdemeanor, I think it should read, "If in any notice or order is not compiled with, the violator shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor, and any person convicted of subsequent violations of either of this section within one year shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the first degree." So that way, you're not going straight to a first-degree misdemeanor, and when we get to the other one, it kind of coincides with it. So I would like to make that change, I guess, Mr. Ray, I mean, if you, we could have Diane make it for when we vote, so it just changes that a little bit to be more consistent.
Excuse me, Mrs. Harwick-Smith, let's bring Mr. Mack up.
Sure. Please.
I believe we'll have to do an amendment on that, so we'll get that from Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Howdy, thank you. So we would have to do an amendment on number seven?
If that's, yeah, that would absolutely have to be an amendment to the amendment to effectuate what Councilwoman Harwick-Smith described.
And there was, does that wording sound right? Would you like me to repeat that?
I heard, I heard, I heard you. I understand that, and I think that, that is you guys, as we've done before, and we worked closely with Councilman Lewis on this, as long as you guys are clear exactly what you're doing, like you just were, and everyone knows what they're voting for, you know, we can craft that to match the written minutes from Diane.
Okay. So that would be four. Do you feel that we should add a number five under 107.4, where we discuss abatement of property, or that it will be, fines will be assessed to the property? Do we need to put that in writing? Because I didn't read that anywhere in there, we talked about that's what we do now, this is going to be our new current set of laws, if we're going to be weeding out old laws down the road. Do you feel that we should add a fifth where we discuss abatements, a fifth assessment of the fines if they don't pay them?
So.
Or is that unnecessary, because we already have standing laws that do that?
Let me go ahead and pull this up here.
Yeah, we changed 107.4 from what was in IPM to year, new thing, we voted for that. So this is a change to number four of 107. So this is a change to number four of 107.4 that we changed.
Yeah, I don't think right now...
So you don't think we need to add anything, like a number five for abatement, just however we vote on this?
No, I don't think so right now. Whether down the road, we may have to make some tweaks on that, that's kind of an evolving thing. We have language to make sure it's a lean.
Right. Councilwoman Markham, you had mentioned that, do you feel that covers it a little bit better, at least by not going straight to a first-degree misdemeanor, that we went to a minor misdemeanor?
So, I mean, I've seen minor misdemeanors, I've seen fourth-degree, oh, I'm sorry. I've seen minor misdemeanors, fourth-degree misdemeanors, third-degree misdemeanors, and first-degree misdemeanors, first degree being definitely the most extreme. So, this kind of would create, like, a chance when there's no civil process in place, when, well, I think there is a civil process in place, actually. So, we could either go the civil route always, or we could go the criminal route always, but either way, we have this light hit to potentially wake up somebody to, hey, fix your property, and then, if it doesn't work, then there's the first-degree misdemeanor a couple of months down the line, as, okay, you didn't, this didn't work, so let's try this.
Right.
So it's not crazy, and it's not something other places don't do as well.
Okay. That was, that was the only change of questions I had about seven. Anybody else? Do you care if I...
Anybody else on seven? All right.
If I, if I may?
Please.
In our experience in the law department, the current code, the housing code, has the criminal penalty for that violation is a minor misdemeanor. We don't think it's strong enough, in our experience. People don't show up, it's, it's not a big enough hammer to effectuate, your guys' policy objectives is what we're trying to do. We end up trying to then couple it with different provisions of the health code to make it stronger, but they don't, they don't fit cleanly, which is why we're going through this exercise. Chief Prosecutor Andrew Bartos is the one that heads that up, and that's been part of our thinking and the way we did it. As Councilman said, you know, there's many degrees, it's, it's, it's hard with minor misdemeanors to get them taken seriously, for what it's worth.
I'll just add on real quick, I do agree, a minor misdemeanor probably won't give the city the leverage that it's seeking. Typically, what ends up happening at the end of these cases, in the event that you actually do secure a criminal conviction on this, this kind of a charge can be a little difficult to secure a criminal conviction on from time to time. So in the event that you do secure a criminal conviction, you do want that leverage of, here's a fine, here's jail time, it's all stayed contingent on you fixing your property up. That is typically the language of any sentencing order that most judges will issue in a case like this. So if it's a fourth-degree misdemeanor, it's 30 days stayed, fine stayed, contingent on you repairing your property, or taking substantial steps to repair your property within 60 days, within 90 days. Hopefully, the judge considers, like, okay, it's December, you're not going to fix certain aspects of your property, but by spring, you should have parts of your property fixed up. And then, if you don't comply with that order, then you have the fine and jail as the leverage to, okay, you didn't do that, so we're going to do this. And it's weird to want to put somebody in jail to fix their property, that's the other side of the spectrum that we're not talking about right now, but most people will fix that property, hopefully.
Do you think we shouldn't just eliminate four altogether, or do you think we should, I mean, just leave it as a first-degree misdemeanor right from the get-go?
I don't have a problem with making it an M4 the first time, and an M1 the second, I mean, 90 days versus...
So is a minor misdemeanor, is that automatically considered M4?
Oh.
The language from that I got from one of our previous laws that we have now, that's why, or should we specify what misdemeanor it is? Because I don't know, like, a lawyer, attorney, like, which is which, I just know, first-degree is the worst, and you can go to jail.
Right.
And I wouldn't want someone, you know, because they didn't comply with number one or something, you know, but, but you've been through this now, we've told you this, this, and you violate again with one year, then I have no problem slapping them with a first-degree misdemeanor.
Right.
I mean, that just gives, you know, I mean, I think it gives us toughness, but I think it gives us fairness, just that.
Right, so a minor misdemeanor, no jail, $150 fine, fourth-degree misdemeanor, I think it's $250 fine, 30 days in jail, maximum. Third-degree, second-degree, I think one of them is 90 days in jail, I haven't dealt with those in a few years now, so it's kind of slipping, and then, 180 days, $1,000 fine is the max for a first-degree misdemeanor. So you could either start as an M4 with a 30-day suspended sentence and $250 suspended fine, and then, if, you know, you have a repeat offender, then it would be a six-month suspended sentence, 180 days, and a $1,000 fine suspended contingent on getting this done, as what we would be looking for.
Plus, in addition, they would have to pay all these other fines in sections A1, 2, 3, correct?
If they got...
It would just be, okay. And so does everybody understand this, or have any?
I think...
My comment, my comment was only that, yes, that was the punishment, but we were not looking at this to be punitive, we're looking at this to inspire people to do what we've asked them to do for the last six months before this, right? So this is, who knows how long into their process that we've been talking to them and working with them and doing these things, and so, if those punishments are found by the court of law, by the law department, by the judge, to be needed, yes, but this wasn't, this isn't set out to be a punitive process, we need this to be the impetus to get people moving.
And I just do want to clarify, I'm not a big fan of putting people in jail for property crimes, I'm much more a fan of the civil process, and hopefully, the civil process works.
Right.
And maybe if this doesn't work, we can explore a new administrative or civil process to tweak what we have already, and maybe we work towards a plan where, you know, we treat it like mowing your lawn. You don't mow your lawn for a few weeks, city puts out the notices, city mows your lawn, and then charges you the cost. Maybe we can work on coming up with something down the line where, hey, your window's been busted and whatnot for the last, I don't know, two years, and we put you on notice for the last 18 months, well, we're going to fix it, and then we're going to bill it, and if you don't pay it, we're assessing it to your tax plat, something like that. But that's future problem, future solution, if this solution doesn't work. We can maybe talk about that.
No, you're absolutely right, and well said, Councilman. The civil part of it, that's something that we're baking into this, to try to have that component, to where if we're boarding up, just like we do with mowing, we're going out with our dumpsters and things like that, that we get these systems in place to make it a process. That's a part of it, for sure, in what we have. Now, getting these, this machinery up and running takes some time. We, I will say that we do have our first employee in the building department now certified, passed his test, certified under the International Property Maintenance Code, and I want to commend Director Hearn-Kane for pushing that. But in doing this legislation, I don't want to state for a second that it's, you know, the law department's view that this is, the end-all, be-all, yes, this has a stick component, and we want to have the stick, so we can try to do as much as we can, but this doesn't speak to the carrot, right? And it'll be some kind of balance of both, that you guys ultimately figure out, this is just a piece. And so we do appreciate the law department, you guys working with us to try to get this done.
Any more discussion on seven? Mr. Councilman Gregg?
Thank you, Councilman Cunningham. So where did we land?
Yeah, I was confused.
That, that we want to leave it as, as minor misdemeanor, and therefore not amend this?
No, it's currently a first-degree misdemeanor.
That's what I mean, I'm sorry.
And how I want to amend it is, if any notice or order is not compiled with, the violator shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor, any person convicted of subsequent violations of either of this section within one year shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the first degree.
So you just want to start with a minor misdemeanor, and then go to a first-degree if not handled?
Correct. In addition, they'll have all the fines, in addition, they'd have all those fines, plus, which I think is a lot.
So...
You know, I mean, if someone's not going to comply, they're really going to be paying, you know, but, I mean, we're really hitting from where we used to be before, and I just think, you know, it's fair.
So, thank you. So, Councilman Markham, based on what you said, basically, we're saying we're going to add 30 days to the process by, by change, or 30 or 60 days to the process by changing it to, starting with a minor misdemeanor?
No. So what a minor mis, what I was saying when it came to days is, minor misdemeanors carry no jail term, fourth-degree misdemeanors, I believe, are 30 days as a maximum jail sentence, third-degree misdemeanors are 60, fourth, fourth, third, second are 90, and then, first-degree misdemeanors are 180 days maximum in jail. So that's what I was talking about, day-wise. When it comes to upping the sanctions here, it could be two, three months. So what we would have to do is, we would have to cite them with building code violation, and then we would have to criminally charge them for failing to comply with that order.
With a minor misdemeanor.
With a minor misdemeanor.
Okay.
And then we would have to convict them of that, which would take a couple weeks, if we're moving quick, but more likely, one to two, probably two months in municipal court.
So...
And then, they would be sentenced to $150 fine, if it's the max, plus court costs, which could be $500, $600 if they took it to trial. And then we would cite them again, and then they would fail to comply again, and then we would cite them with an M1.
So it sounds like the change we're contemplating is going to add time on the front end?
100%.
Right, a significant amount of time, it sounds like.
Yeah, to effectuate the policy objectives, the ordinances, we have to have another conviction, and then we only have a year. So, yeah.
Which, I definitely don't want to take teeth out of what we've got, I mean, you're also not crazy about adding time to the process, you know, because ultimately, we want the situation remedied, and I don't, and ultimately, it's going to get remedied one way or the other, I don't know that we necessarily want to put, add additional time on the front end, is what, is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Okay, so then, we're, Mr. Lewis, Councilman Lewis?
I just want to remind everybody that if we make any adjustments to seven, eight, nine, or 10, those will require amendments to be made at the next council meeting, which will be voted on by us, and then, the respective ordinance would go back to first reading. So, anything we talk about tonight, if it's altering what's already been presented to council, can't actually be transacted until next week.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, so, we're, oh, Mrs. Creamer?
So I know we've had numerous conversations with these. Can you get your proposed language? Have we received this? Because I know we've been changing a lot of the language, can you get your proposed language to Diane, so then she can send it out to us, so we can at least have it on paper?
Mm-hmm.
Because I can't process everything, and we can kind of go from there if, if we amend it the next meeting, because yes, it goes back to first reading, but yes, I agree with Mr. Gregg, you know, with the time factor, you know, we're trying to get...
Well, basically, I feel with the time factor, even if they're, if they're to the point where we're charging them, they've already gone through all these other steps, and they've already hit three different fines, and we've never specified in here how long we're giving them for anything, you know, you know, if you're, if it's a grass mowing, or if it's your roof needing repaired, nowhere in these new laws does it say you have 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. So how fast something moves along, from what I'm seeing, is under the discretion of the code enforcement.
You are correct.
And, once we get to that point, I mean, you're going to be out so many steps, but it's all kind of be based on how fast they move, how much time they give them to repair something, and we don't have that specified anywhere, you know, where, and, you know, we say we're going to work with people, and obviously, you know, if someone has to get windows, you know, a roof or something done that you can't do in the wintertime, you're going to have things out anyhow. Whether, whichever way you're charging them, when it, by the time it's going to court, I think you're going to be out the same amount of time, whether we're charging them a minor misdemeanor or a first-degree misdemeanor right off the bat, you're going to be at the same time stance from then, wouldn't you?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, tell me, I mean, just...
The distinction I would make, and which we've seen, is nobody cares about a minor misdemeanor. You go apply for a job, minor misdemeanors are specifically excluded. They don't have an impact on trying to get people to clean up the properties, in our experience.
Mrs. Brownhoof? Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. To your point, Julie, I think, and I don't know, but maybe Mr. Hearn-Kane knows, I don't think any other code enforcement is here, there are other policies in code enforcement department that guide what they do, is that correct? It's not arbitrary that says, you have two weeks to do your window, you have nine months to do your roof. There are standards of repair, yes?
The IPMC does not state specific times, but the policies that code does use is about a 30, 60, 90-day process. That's the first, usually, there's a warning letter, day one. There's the first violation, second violation, third violation, by the time it gets to the law department, whether criminal or civil penalties are pursued, you're 120 days into the process. Those are internal policies that we think are reasonable, to give someone 30 days, and then another 30 days, and then another 30 days, and that's still being maybe a little generous, some other places may not provide that long of a window, but we feel that's, as an internal policy standpoint, pretty, pretty sufficient.
And things like weather and seasonality are all taken into consideration...
Oh, sure.
...when this is done. So, nothing is arbitrary, it's does not based on who's your neighbor, who's your friend, there's policies and guidelines that...
Correct.
...that work through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so where do we stand?
I think the decision point for the body is, right now, the amendment, I believe, written, is given to Diane, reads misdemeanor for the first offense, if I'm not mistaken. The decision point would be whether to keep that portion of it in, or, as to Councilman Markham's point, it's not either first-degree misdemeanor and minor misdemeanor, or those are the only options. If there is a staged approach, it could be, as the Councilman said, his prosecutor did these sorts of things at a felony level, four through one. Our, with our charge, we feel like our charge being to, to get more of a hammer and to get results, and do it smartly, I mean, we've all spent a lot of time on this, but to, it's easier to put in place now than to try to change it later, and to go the other direction. And so, our office's preference would be to start as hard as we can, or as hard as you guys will allow it.
Mrs. Harwick-Smith?
Can you tell me, I don't like starting as hard as you can when we're trying to work with people, but can you tell me, you've been here now several years for our city, doing a good job, how many cases have actually gone to court for any type of misdemeanor of any degree?
Of any kind of crime, or property crime?
Like, that would fall under here, how many have we taken to court?
How many misdemeanors?
Misdemeanors have we taken to court?
Thousands. I don't understand, I don't think I fully understand the question. We, the, the, Master Law Department does all crimes for the western third of Stark County, I mean, we're talking about...
So I don't, so I don't mean general misdemeanors, I meant as far as code enforcement?
Yes.
How many code enforcements have, like, we've gone to court over, because they didn't comply at some point?
So...
I mean, I can think of one, that was, you know...
I don't have full visibility into that, because it's handled by the criminal division, but I know, because this is part of the kind of dual approach that we're trying to go on, the civil division. They happen, I'm not saying that, you know, we have full dockets of them, I think they are fairly far and few between. The, a challenge, as Chief Prosecutor Bartos has explained to me, is with, it's not written like that now, since you passed the IPMC, but the challenge, when we were doing these under the old laws, was the different standards to try to bring in the health code violations to make it more of a penalty and something serious. Writing a ticket effectively for a minor misdemeanor, that, the time that that takes and the consumption of administrative resources is, is pretty significant, not just the time, you know, the inspections of code and all that sort of stuff, but for all of these things... all of these things, we have to bring in the Police Department, because our code enforcement officers, while they're certified now under the IPMC, they're not peace officers. And so, we have to have two people at the very start, ready to testify. The cop has to sign the complaint, and has to have probable cause to bring the charge. It's a thing to get it started, as I have observed. It's a rambling answer to, yes, we have had convictions. The way they shake out is that, when it's a, an actual misdemeanor charge, not a minor misdemeanor, you get in front of Judge Ealem, you get in front of Judge Victor, and he says, "What's going on? Fix your house. Why haven't you?" And, you know, to Councilman Markham's point, it's the sword of hammer, the help of the bench, it gets the properties cleaned up, but it's, the Criminal Division has had a lot of input on how to fix that side of it.
As far as when they, if they're charged with it, and a misdemeanor, and they don't take care of it, and they have to go to court, is it any diff- I mean, so it's a difference in fine and difference in penalty, but is it any difference in the amount of time that, as far as when it's going to take them to go to court? When we're saying that, it's like we're prolonging it? Bottom line, if you get your court, I mean, if it's going to court, you're just waiting till your court date, and things are prolonged, period, if we get to that point where someone's going to court. Is that not true? Or am I looking at?
I would think it would standard reason that there's going to be more time in preparing a first-degree misdemeanor case. I mean, there are going to be lawyers on the other side than preparing effectively traffic to go. Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Mr. Markham?
I might have a creative solution here. We leave it as an M1, and maybe we talk to the court, and we talk to the prosecutor's office about having a diversion-type program. So, I know honor court works, so veteran courts typically do have a very high success rate of remediating or rehabilitating individuals charged with a crime, whether it's a misdemeanor or a felony. And the incentive there is typically wipes away the criminal conviction. And the incentive on our side is, it helps that individual not reoffend. Drug courts are also typically fairly successful and whatnot. We could do something similar here. The carrot and the stick with a diversion program is, you don't get diversion if you take the case to trial. You get diversion if you plead guilty at one of your, one of your pre-trials. And your conditions are typically in a diversion program to find some sort of education, whether that be through a Veterans Network, through drug rehabilitation courses, through domestic violence courses, and felony cases, this, that, the other. There's all sorts of different diversion programs throughout this county, both at the county level and here at the municipal court level. We could potentially look into developing a diversion program for these types of properties, for these types of individuals, where you get one bite at diversion. If you've gone through diversion once, you can't go through diversion again. The incentive is, the criminal conviction gets wiped away on their end, and, you know, maybe they never find themselves in such a pickle again. And the incentive for us would be, we no longer have that blighted property. Those issues that have been identified are fixed. And this individual's likely not to reoffend, because they've gone through the process, and they know, I'm not saying it's going to work for everybody, but for the folks that it sounds like this body's very concerned about the most in need, not necessarily the folks who just don't care, maybe it gets us what we need. So, maybe we can leave it as an M1, not have to worry about restarting this legislation through an amendment, and then, work on a potential amendment down the line, or just work with the prosecutor's office and the courts to push a diversion-type program, in the event that this becomes a problem. Or even proactively. I don't know how many cases we foresee getting here, I don't know.
I mean, hopefully, not a lot, because hopefully, the word gets out, and people clean up their properties. But, yeah, I mean, I, and I, I know I can't, I'm not from here, but I have been driving around, trying to socialize myself with this. There are properties to enforce. So, I think it's well said. I mean, Judge Ealem is, his body knows, I mean, he has a award-winning community service program. There is a diversion program that applies, I don't, I'm not a criminal attorney, again, on a lot of charges. I know obstruction with evidence and false statements to an officer was subject to it. To get the judiciary fully engaged, we got to get the cases in front of them, and I think something like that sounds perfect. So, well said.
Mrs. Harwick-Smith?
So, as far as this legislation, does this, but you feel, basically, it comes down to, do you think we should give them a minor misdemeanor, and then, a first-degree misdemeanor after that, or just straight to a first-degree misdemeanor? Because we want to, if we're going to just keep it straight to a first-degree misdemeanor, then we can just vote on it as is. Is so, is there any interest in making it a minor misdemeanor, or am I the only one who thinks it should be straight to a first-degree misdemeanor?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. We'll leave it as is, and we can vote on it on Monday.
Yes, Mr. Packley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. I do have, because a lot of times through these discussions, I've been hearing, civil and criminal. Is it defined? Is it always going to be civil, or is it always going to be criminal?
It could be either or both, rarely both, rarely, but to Councilwoman Harwick-Smith.
Who decides that, if it's civil or criminal, because someone hasn't mowed their grass, or has a broken window, or has a hole in their roof?
It would be the Law Department. The Law Department would make that initial determination.
They make that choice.
Yes, but it's, we're trying, the systems that we're trying to put in place, it's going to be kind of a different animal, as to whether we're, there's a serious house issue, that we're going to get the machinery of the criminal laws going, versus, hopefully, systems and procedures in place for cutting boardups, dumpsters, to where that's more of a money situation.
I mean, personally, it'd be, if you didn't mow your grass, or you have a broken window, you'd be handled civilly, not criminally. I don't know if people should be threatened with a criminal conviction because of the unsightliness of their yard or their hole.
Yeah, that's a policy decision for you guys to make, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then I suggest, okay, I'm confused. Okay, so we're just going to leave it as it is, all four, correct? And it'll come to a vote then, on Monday. But again, Julie, and Jill, thank you for the work that you did do investigating on this. You guys put in an awful lot of work, and thank you.
If I may, Chairwoman, I second that. I mean, we've, your understanding of this legislation, what we're trying to do, I mean, we're a team here, and you guys are on the front lines, and have to explain it to the constituents. So, this has been valuable.
Thank you for your work as well. All right, that's it for me.
You know, ordinance eight, nine, and 10, we need to discuss.
I'm going to go grab my game ready, if that's okay.
Can we just discuss?
Okay, we got number eight. Who wants to discuss number eight?
I can, I guess.
Okay.
So, ordinance number eight.
Thank you. Ordinance number eight, under section thirteen oh six oh three, deletions, will read, and currently reads, and I'll tell you what we're eliminating, it reads, "Any person shall have the right to appeal a decision of the code official of the Board of Building Appeals. An application for appeal shall be based on a claim that the intent of this code and the rules legally adopted hereunder have been incorrectly interpreted. Provisions of this code do not fully apply, or an equally good or better form of construction is proposed. The application shall be filed within thirty days of service of the notice or the decision of the code officials." That's how it, and then, what we are eliminating is, it says, "Therefore, eliminating the one hundred dollar payment fee to file the appeal and extending the days of the service from twenty to thirty." And if you guys think we should keep it at twenty, I mean, then we'd have to amend it, but this basically is cut and dry, and people have expressed their opinions. I think if someone has a problem, they're already paying all these huge fines, which are way more than they've ever been in the city, that one way of knowing if something is effective, when you're, is to get feedback. And one way of getting feedback is to allow them to appeal. We don't have that many appeals, but at least then, we know if there's a problem. There already, I mean, it doesn't, it's not like it costs us any money for someone to come down and talk to our Board of Appeals and say they're upset about something, and then, they can decide whatever. I just think, given, placing another hundred dollar fee on them, on top of everything else, is just putting salt in the wound, and it discourages feedback. You know, because some people are like, "I can't afford anymore, I just want to be this over," and you're not going to hear it, but we need that feedback. And so, that's why I'm proposing that, and that's simply what it is, we're removing that you can appeal without having to pay, because, I mean, if you go to court, and they say they, the Board of Appeals says, "No, we agree with our code enforcement officer," which is most likely what they're going to do, then they're talking court appeals, and that's a whole new animal with fees, and attorneys, and everything else they're going to be paying, on top of all the other fees. So, I think this just adds a little bit of fairness, of fairness, for all these new laws we've just instituted, that people are not really aware of. So, that's all I have to say about eight, if anyone.
Anybody else? Councilman Gregg?
Thank you, Councilman Cunningham. I've stated before, I'm not in favor of eliminating the hundred-dollar fee. I would not support this if that's, if this is in this, because I think they've got plenty of time throughout the process for feedback. I don't think feedback is intended to come at the appeal step, should have been given prior to that. They're in contact with code enforcement and with the Law Department prior to this point, so they, plenty of opportunity for feedback at that point. I just don't want to see, if there's no, if there's no financial commitment at all, there's no incentive to, I mean, there's incentive to just appeal. Why not just appeal and see what I can do? And it, yeah, it doesn't, maybe it doesn't cost us anymore, but it costs time. Time is money. So, I, I'm okay with changing the days from, from twenty to thirty that they have for the appeal. I think, actually, I like that change, but I'm not in favor of limiting the hundred-dollar refundable fee. If they prevail in their appeal, they get that money back anyway. So, it's not like it's a large, too significant of, of a fine, or in this case, a fee, that would cause anybody to not take this step. So, I, again, I'm not in favor of eliminating the hundred-dollar fee, but I would be in favor of changing the days to thirty.
Anybody else? So, your amendment, Julie, is to?
To remove the hundred-dollar fee. And most people, if they're going to appeal, I think they appeal right from the beginning. Like, they're not going to let it get down to all these steps and fines, and step three and four. If most people have a problem, like they think they were unjust, I mean, you're going to hear it, I think, sooner than that, but that's just simply, this deals with the appeal process. It doesn't change, it's still got all the other fines, and if it don't go through, but...
Mrs. Harwick, or Mrs. Brianhoof?
Thank you. I think in our, in our planning, anyway, there's variances that are granted. Is, Mr. Mack, is that correct? So, while code enforcement is conversating with people, is that a time where variances could be used as a pre-appeal juncture?
Okay, I misspoke. So, variances in terms of zoning code, those requirements, yes, happens all the time, and it's, the personnel blends together.
I see.
Yes, that's a very familiar process. I, I don't want to say that there's going to be variances given by code enforcement officers to allow somebody to violate this code. I don't think that we're going to have a procedure like that.
No, thank you. I was looking for a, thank you.
Anybody else? So, you?
So, it stays the same, and we vote on it? I mean, there's no changes.
All right, thank you. All right, number nine.
Okay. Number nine is the storage of unlicensed vehicles. And the proposal here is, the IPMC reads motor vehicles, except as provided for in other regulations, inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicles shall not be parked, kept, or stored on any premises, and vehicles shall not at any time be in any state of dis- major disassembly, disrepair, or the process of being stripped or dismantled. Painting of vehicles is prohibited unless conducted inside an approved spray booth. Exception is, any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul, including bodywork, provided that such work is performed inside a structure, similarly enclosed area designated for such approved purpose. And on this one, I wanted to replace that with our current law. So, section three oh two point eight motor vehicles would be deleted and replaced with a storage of unlicensed motor vehicles. Our current law says, no person shall store or permit to be stored upon any lotter land for a period of more than twenty days. Any motor vehicle that does not have displayed thereon license plates for the current year, unless the vehicle is stored in a completely enclosed building or garage. The twenty-day time period shall not mean any twenty days, and should not mean twenty, it shall not mean twenty consecutive days. This section shall not apply to persons doing business in property-zoned areas for sale, salvage, repair, or impounding of motor vehicles. B, in addition, the owner must produce, upon request, verification of insurance papers required by the state law as to a minimum insurance requirement for each vehicle in violation of subsection A. And then, C, is any motor vehicle stored for more than twenty days in violation of section A, may be towed and impounded. And then, D, whoever violates any section of this is guilty of a minor misdemeanor, which if we're not changing seven, then it doesn't matter about eliminating this. Any person convicted of a subsequent violation of either of the section, within one year, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the first degree. So, that is our current law. I think it's better than this other one. The only thing, I, I had a question, I was okay with our current law, and that's what I want, but the one question I had, and then, I was looking, and it's not illegal to have an unlicensed vehicle parked on your property in the state of Ohio. So, municipalities have that right to have that law. I do think it's a good law for our, for us, because, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's just a matter, this type of area usually gets enforced, it's probably the police who enforce this, right? Like, just code enforcement, or is it just them working together? How this works now, and how it will work with either of them?
It, if it's a towing situation, police will be involved, as they are now, but it will be different.
Do you think, under section B, it's necessary to require verification of insurance papers, or that having a current license is enough?
I, it's kind of, we discussed before, I mean, by default, is to stick with as much as we can, the International Property Maintenance Code, the way that it's, that it's drafted. I think the best way that I've found to understand this amendment is the example that Councilwoman Kramer brought up, the last time we discussed it, is the distinction between having an unlicensed vehicle versus having a vehicle that's in disrepair, right? There are vehicles that have tags, that have been there for three years, that are on blocks. It's, it's, you know, it's, these are kind of the policy decisions, is what, what do you want in the neighborhoods?
That's all I have for nine.
Any other discussion, questions, or comments?
And then, ordinance number ten?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Please.
Ordinance number ten. Ordinance number ten, under the way the current IPMC is written, everything has to be in a trash can. As we've discussed, we do have different trash supply, trash pickup companies that will pick up bulk pickup. And obviously, everybody has bulk pickup at some point in their life, whether you're throwing out a couch or a mattress, and it has to be covered in all that. I believe you agreed with this one, or, but what the one word they did not like was that they felt we should remove the word "non-organic." If we remove that one word, can we still vote on this on Monday? Can we, like, vote to change it, and then, just go forward? Or do we have to go all the way back?
You'd have to, as.
But, but can we go back, and it would be first reading, and we could vote, just to get it over with? We could still.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, okay. So, what this would read then, and this is an addition, this is not anywhere in there, because it's not addressed in the IPM. So, ordinance number one oh three, twenty twenty-five, would be amended under section thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh six point oh three, amendment deletion supplements to the International Property Maintenance Code, to add section three oh eight point five Y, bulk pickup. amendments deletion supplements to the International Property Maintenance Code to add Section 308.5Y, bulk pickup. Section 308.5Y shall read, bulk pickups such as mattresses, couches, furniture, and other rubbish that does not fit into a rubbish container shall be placed at the curb no more than seventy-two hours of scheduled pickup. The reason I had originally put non, I was thinking organic because I didn't want like food things, but he, they recommended that we just remove non-organic and it was okay the rest of the way. So what I'm proposing is that we remove that and we still go forward and vote on this. Does everybody understand or have any questions on?
Mr. Lewis?
I like this one. And my only thought is, I wonder if seventy-two hours is too long.
Well, there, I just was, yeah, most, I don't know if some trash players, I just didn't want anything, there's, if you put no time limit, then, I mean, we've, I've had people move out of houses or rent, you know, usually it's a renter and there's no trash play. But I've had people move out and they're moving out and they're putting things out all week. There's no place to put it.
That's why I mean, I'm thinking like.
And that's why I didn't want it, I mean, in few, I don't care, forty-eight hours.
Yeah, I was like twenty-four hours, maybe, like the night before, the day before is acceptable.
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking someone put it out, seventy-two hours, if your trash pickup's on Monday, you could put it there on Friday.
So you want, I'm okay, I just want something for bulk pickup.
Pickers need time.
I mean, twenty-four, forty-eight, does anybody have a little preference? Give a little nod on what you think?
I don't have an issue with forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Mr. Markham?
So I like seventy-two, just because I don't have a lot of time and my trash pickup day is on Wednesday and Sundays are usually pretty clear. And when you don't really have Monday, Tuesday, and your pickup's Wednesday morning.
Right.
It, it just makes sense. I know everybody on my street, their pickup's Wednesday and everybody around me, their pickup's on Wednesday.
Doing projects on the weekend.
I'm assuming other people.
I don't think that the hours is really the issue, this is just giving us protection. But then it also, this will give us, to the point where you have that person who puts something out and it's sitting there for a week or two. We can't have things sitting on the side of the road.
To follow up with that though, Seth, in some neighborhoods, if you let your trash can be there still Thursday, they're yelling at you. So, so we got to be respectful of all people where they're like, they don't want to see even a trash can out on the curb longer than the morning of. Seventy-two hour, I, I think seventy-two hours is a bit long.
Mrs. Kramer?
And if things are sitting out on the curb, you know, that's, just attracts vermin, animals, and whatever you have may now be throughout your neighborhood.
That was.
So, so you got to be careful. Well, the, well, even with bulk pickups, you just have to be careful. So forty-eight hours, I guess I would, that would be pushing it for me. So that's kind of where I would, and there are forty-eight hours.
Mr. Gregg?
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. I agree, I think seventy-two is excessive. Right now, they can't put out the barrels more than, it was earlier than six o'clock the day before collection. So, so let's say twenty-four hours before inspection. So if we gave another twenty-four hours with that type of thing, I think is, is plenty. Mr. Markham, I appreciate your comments, but I think the concern is, what do your neighbors think about your putting, putting the trash out? Not what you think about it, but what do the neighbors think about you putting it out four days ahead of time? Thank you.
I just want to clarify. I am not putting trash like out, out there every weekend or anything like that. I'm just thinking ahead, like, okay, Joe Schmo might have an issue doing this on a Monday, so let's give him until Sunday. And I'm assuming the best in people here. I'm assuming it's like, oh crap, Bob's water heater went out on Wednesday. He fixes it himself on Wednesday, Sunday, puts it out there on Sunday, and then it's picked up and gone Tuesday, Wednesday. Oh yeah, they're usually gone in about twelve hours. But that, that's all I meant, like, I'm assuming the best, like, it's not sitting there forever.
Mr. Hearn Kane?
Thank you, Councilwoman Cunningham. I want to clarify, this is regarding bulk pickup, not normal trash and refuse, right? So you can't put your bag or your trash can, we're talking items, correct? Okay, so hopefully couches and mattresses and cabinets wouldn't attract wildlife, but the trash is going to stay the same.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, my comment, I'm sorry, Mr. Cunningham, my comment about the trash pickup was just comparing the fact that we already restrict how long that has to be out, you know, within a certain period of time, or cannot be out prior to a certain period of time. And extending that three times.
Correct.
Seems excessive.
My comment was, yes, it's going to attract animals, but what about children? And what about things falling on people, on children, that they're out there climbing? You know, if things are sitting there on the sidewalk? I mean, you just have to kind of be careful, it's about safety.
Yeah.
So, just my thoughts.
Edmund, one of the reasons, and I think what it was that this was just kind of an error. So do you think it's better to remove the word non-organic rubbish? Or really what the proper word would be in addition to this is organ, no, it would be non-organic. Because we don't want organic rubbish, we don't want any type of food, and that wouldn't be considered bulk pickup. So just remove non-organic altogether? Like, because non-organic is basically, by saying non-organic, you're allowing bulk pickup of items that aren't perishable. That was why I put that in there, because I don't want people putting.
I think I'm following.
But I think the, the issue was that wood and cotton and things like that are technically.
Organic.
Because they grow. So I think in our conversations, that's why the non-organic didn't work. So there was a.
Well, they go into organic and non-organic and, you know, just as far as their definition, they define it, you know, but we can just remove it. I mean, that's probably just easier, it's just an extra word in there that we don't really need. So just put other rubbish, and we'll make two changes. We'll remove non-organic and change it to forty-eight hours, kind of taking a happy medium.
Okay.
And we'll change that and then we can vote on it on Monday after it's be first reading, okay? Everyone's?
Everybody on the same page?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, okay, now I'm finished.
Thank you, everyone.
Now you're off.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Okay, next we're with Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Harwick Smith?
I have nothing for Parks and Recs this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Police and Fire, Mr. Markham?
Nothing for Police and Fire.
Okay, Public Utilities, Mrs. Brian Huth?
Thank you, Mr. Gregg, we do have one item this evening. If I could ask Mr. Pitts, our city engineer, to come forward. This is a piece to please prepare an ordinance to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for and receive sealed bids and enter into contract with the lower and best bidder upon the approval of the Board of Control for the Wellman Avenue, Medill Avenue, and Commonwealth Avenue sanitary sewer improvement projects.
Good evening, Council. Yes, just as the legislation states, this is for the three sanitary sewer replacement projects. Just to give a little bit of context, all three of these projects were on the sanitary rate study that you forced, that you saw last year. And also, all three of these projects involve upgrading our six-inch lines to eight-inch sanitary sewer lines, so. Yeah, all three projects are, the design's already done, we're just ready to go out to bid and procure the funds, so.
Alex, is it the full length of each of those streets?
No, 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 it's a section. I can give you the linear footage for each one, they're, all of them are completely different. But I can give, I can send that out to everyone, or just bring it to next work session or council meeting, whichever you prefer. So, it's just a small portion of them.
Mrs. Kramer?
And just, I can't recall, these were chosen because the rating was the worst of the worst when we evaluated them?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Harwick Smith?
Thank you, Councilwoman. So when we do this, these are running, these areas, is it going to be in the road or is it going to be in people's properties?
It's going to be in the road.
Okay. So is that where the existing one is actually in the road? So the roads will just be like patched, are they automatically going to be repaved? Are we doing storm, are the storm sewers already done? And just, so I just would, if we're doing that, and this is such a big one, I just want everybody to know that we're going to complete it totally.
Yeah, yeah, so it depends on where the sanitary sewer is located within the roadway. So for example, if you have an east-west street running east-west and the sanitary sewer is on the northern lane for westbound traffic, for example, we're not going to repave the eastbound lane because it's a little excessive. But we'll repave the entire westbound lane. Does that make sense? So, yeah, so it's just how we try to stretch our funds. But if the sanitary sewer line is in the middle of the roadway, then yeah, we would restore the entire roadway. I don't want to leave patches all over the place, I think that's a little ridiculous. If we can at least restore a lane's worth.
Right.
Kind of like what we did, well, not what we did, but Aqua did, what we asked Aqua to do on Lincoln Way, at least the entire lane, even though they were on the edge of the lane, and we requested the entire lane to be repaved just because we don't want a sliver of asphalt patch repair, that's.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mrs. Cunningham? Thank you, Mrs. Brian Huth. I have a question for Mr. Pitts, but not concerning this, is that all right?
Depends.
I noticed all of the pipes that were delivered on Erie Street, when will that sewer project get started?
North Erie Canal in Burton is slated for May, early May. So letters went out to the businesses of the start date, I believe, or I may be thinking first to first. But regardless, either letters were already sent out or they will be sent out here soon with the start date, so.
Mrs. Harwick, sir?
Thank you, is there any cost when you're putting a new sewer line down? Do the homes and businesses have to tie into that new sewer? So is that cost on them from their property, or?
No, so what we do is when we put that new sewer in, the laterals are incidental to the sewer line itself, meaning when you put in the new sewer line, they have to tie in the laterals as a part of that cost.
Okay, so they can be reassured that they're not going to have.
Yes, they're, they're not paying anything, we take full responsibility of that cost, correct?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry, I do have a question.
Mr. Packley?
Thank you. What about the idea of putting backflow, is this an area where the sewer can or cannot, or has a history of backing up?
So backflow preventers are usually used when we're experiencing common surcharge in the main.
Yeah.
If we're putting a new sewer in, the hope is that we're alleviating the surcharge. So realistically, we wouldn't want to put a backflow preventer in because we're handling the issue, which is the capacity of the sewer. So, especially in this case, because right now the capacity is for a six-inch line and we're going to an eight-inch. So you have more capacity in the line anyway, so there's no need to put a back.
And that's at the top of the hill anyway, for the most part, right?
Correct.
But in the future, when we're in those areas that are low lying or there are a series of backups, hopefully that, that would be discussed to put in backflow preventers.
That is always an option in areas where you see tremendous amount of surcharge on a regular basis, correct?
All right, thank you.
So.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have, Mr. Gregg.
Thank you, Mrs. Brian Huth. And Mr. Pitts, you might as well stay up there, I believe. Next, we have my committee, Rules Courts and Civil Service, I've got two items this evening. First one is please prepare an ordinance creating the position of office/billing supervisor for the wastewater treatment department. Class grade is eighteen S, unclassified. Position has been approved by civil service as of August 12th, 2024, and is pending council authorization for implementation. What can you tell us about this?
Yes, so this position would be at the wastewater treatment department, as the legislation states. It is for the office billing supervisor, it is a supervisory position. They would be over the chief billing assistant, the admin assistant for wastewater treatment department, and then also the utility billing clerk. So three positions that they would technically be over in the hierarchy. And they are basically in charge of all of our billing that we send out quarterly, submitting for that. And then also a quasi-admin assistant for, down at the wastewater treatment department. So the way it works and the way it's structured now, essentially this position would be over the billing sub-department at wastewater treatment department, which is up on the second floor of the plant, office building. And then they would also be over the admin assistant that's up on the hill, which is another admin assistant that we're using for our collection systems, the sub-department for wastewater. So they would be over those two positions, those two positions are what we have filled now, so.
So this is creating a new position?
Correct.
How is that working now? You don't have the supervision, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And you're, you need it?
Yes, we do need it. So we, we don't have that position right now. We have a person that's kind of doing the job now, but not really officially. So she's technically not anyone's direct supervisor, except for on the billing side, so.
Okay. Other questions, Mrs. Kramer?
So you have someone that's kind of doing it now, so are you planning on moving this person into this position? Or are you creating an additional position? Because I'm just trying to figure out, like, funding, where's the funding coming from? I need a job resume so I can kind of see what these responsibilities are compared to this current person's responsibilities and how they differ.
So we would still post the position and take applications and review resumes and things of that nature. The idea would be for this new person to apply for that position, of course, they don't have to, but the idea would be.
Minate her position?
That position would still be on the books, still. This is just more of a supervisory position. Right now, she's not supervising the admin assistant, for example, but she's taking on, this position is taking on more of an admin assistant role plus chief billing role as well, so they're doing two jobs kind of at once.
But they're currently doing it now with what they have. So we're not, we don't have additional resources now and the job's getting done. So you're wanting to create a new position for somebody to step in. So we'll have, we'll have an additional FTE, additional person, but the same responsibilities are now going to be shared among three people or two people? I'm just trying to get a better understanding on the need of this, of this position? And, you know, is it, why is it full-time? Have we considered part-time? Moving people around and maybe having that person be a supervisor and then have that person and another part-timer? I'm just, I'm just trying to grasp, you know, the need right now.
Yeah, so as far as part-time, that was never discussed previously. And as far as the need, it's truly just to encapsulate the two, I say two departments, but realistically, the admin assistant is still under wastewater treatment department. But I digress, it's to encapsulate pretty much all of the office people into one sort of sub-department. And then having a manager over top overseeing all of those individuals underneath the office workers that are at the plant. That's the idea, that's, that's the need. I mean, I could speak with Tony if there's anything else, but.
Mr. Kramer, finished?
Yes.
So I just want to follow up real quick on what Mrs. Kramer said. She mentioned the funding, where is funding coming from?
So it's already been written into the budget. So both positions have actually already been written into the budget in preparation for this, so.
Yeah, I, I do share Mrs. Kramer's concern, we're creating a position where for work that's already being done, right? So that, that's my concern. Mrs. Harwick Smith?
Thank you, Councilman Gregg. I, I have the same concern. I was wondering if you could maybe provide us for our next work session, like, a list of how many employees are employed by wastewater and what the hierarchy is? I'm kind of, I'm not a big fan of having a million chiefs and few Indians. And you're talking creating, like they said, a position that's a whole nother pay and benefits and everything else on the city. So even at nineteen S, our benefits that we provide cost us a lot of money for family to insure them. We already have these jobs being done and to create a position that's only over two people, I kind of. kind of think, so I'd like to see the, the pay scales of where we're at now with these people and what their job description is and what the job description of this new one would be and how it would change the previous. So we have a better idea. I mean, I know it's always nice to have more, but as you know, we run a very tight budget. And I just, if there really is a true need, then I could support it. But if it's something that can be absorbed and we could just maybe promote someone because they're taking on more responsibilities and adjust them up as opposed to adding a third person, as long as the job's getting done adequately and being supervised. Currently, these two people that would have, that are three people that this new position would be over, right? It'd be three people they'd be over?
It's three positions on the books. We only have two. So right now, as it stands, they would be over two.
They would only be over two people?
Correct.
And basically, assuming the responsibilities of those two people are just their only responsibility is overseeing those two people?
That's not their only responsibility. They're still doing admin assistant work and then also on top of that, handling the supervisory portion of the, sending out the bills for everybody's sewer bill and.
Right.
That nature, so.
So who currently, so is in charge of, who oversees those two positions now?
Our plant manager.
Okay.
So he oversees all three of those positions.
Right. And so as plant manager, how many people do we employ in the plant?
Oh, geez. I'd have to, I'd have to look.
Okay.
Because it's.
Like, job description, that would just be more helpful.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, you've got.
Because you're talking 20 people, 50 people. You shouldn't have to have all these managers and supervisors. I mean, that's, gets to be a problem, you know, with me anyhow, you know, too many chiefs and not enough Indians. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lewis?
Something you had mentioned. So there is a, you said there was a person now that provides some support to these staff members and they'd be free to apply?
Yes.
What position is that? That's not one of the three.
It's, it's one of the three that they would eventually be supervising over. So right now, it's the chief billing assistant. It's what she is right now. She's also doing admin assistant work.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's the connection that needed to be made.
Okay.
So.
So, because, because what I'm hearing, what I was thinking, is I would, I would be curious if there was consideration of saying, hey, you know, chief billing.
Assistant.
Assistant, thank you. You know, why not make you chief billing officer? And now you oversee these other two people with you. And that way, we're not having three plus one, you're having two in the advancement.
Yeah.
That, that.
That's where I'm.
That's where I think, I don't know. That was just a thought.
Mr. Markham?
So it sounds like this person's job is to do the original job plus supervise. And what would be the supervisory tasks that they're, like, their job is just to make sure the bills go out, or?
So handle any call-offs, sick time leave, PTO, things of that nature, and then also basically handing work off as well, while also doing their normal duties as well. So pretty much just.
Okay, because one of my concern, one of my thoughts here is whether or not there's some, what systems we have in place technology-wise that might help streamline this work as well? Whether or not, you know, they're taking full advantage of a Microsoft Excel sheet or a similar type sheet, whether or not we have our own programs in place, and maybe that's something we could talk about. It would be, it would be nice to see what.
So realistically, you definitely, well, you want at least two admin assistants down there. And the reason I say that is because you have your collection system, which has their own superintendent and all, and collection crew and everybody up on the hill. Right as you enter, try to coming into the wastewater treatment plant, that building right there has offices and people working in it. And they're a part of the collection systems that head out into the city and clean our sanitary sewer system and things of that nature. So you'd want to have an admin assistant there because if anybody has any issues with backups, for example, like a sanitary sewer backup, you would call that office. That is the office you would call. But if you have a question about billing or anything with the treatment plant, you would want to call down at the office at the plant. So you technically still need two admin assistants handling, whether it's plant-related stuff and billing-related stuff, or if it's dealing with more of like the public on, you know, sanitary sewer backups and things of that nature. So that's the, that's the idea. That was the intent when we implemented it that way. And then now this person that's down at the plant would supervise both the person that's up on top of the hill at the collections building, and then also the billing assistant that's down at the plant on the second floor, handling the billing as well. That's the idea. That was the goal. So if that makes any sense, if there's anything unclear, I can try to clarify, but.
Other questions? Okay, this does not have emergency language and doesn't sound like it's a huge, there's a huge urgency to this. Sign it for the agenda, but we'll definitely give it just for us reading and have more discussion. And if you can get the information that Mrs. Harwick Smith was asking for.
Yep.
Be great.
Of course.
Job description and resume. Well, not resume yet, yeah, right. All right. Next, we have please prepare an ordinance creating the position of safety officer for the wastewater treatment department. Class grade 19S to 20S, classified. Person, this position has been approved by the civil service as of August 12, 2024, and is pending council authorization for implementation. So this is another position.
Correct. That position would be handling this. So this is volume one and two of our safety and health manual for the plant. So every day, this person would go through these manuals and make sure every position down there, your operators and mechanics, your labors, et cetera, are following the guidelines within these safety hand, health manuals. And approximately every one to two months, we have project list meetings down at the plant. And one of the subtopics is safety. So essentially, this would, this person would head and lead those meetings and then make sure that everybody down at the plant is complying with what these two manuals are stating. This is volume one and volume two here. So essentially, this is the job. And right now, it's being handled duly by our plant manager and our chief, wow, I forgot his position. Our, our plant maintenance supervisor, sorry.
Questions? This is Brian Huth?
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. And I think it would be fair to assume, Alex said, those are ever-changing and evolving and moving pieces, state, federal, and all those other parties combined. And then this person would also be involved in whatever agencies they needed to, to go and find the new information, bring it back and such.
Yeah, things like OSHA and things of that nature. Yep, anything that has to do with safety, it would take, take on.
Thank you.
Mr. Packley?
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. So for the, this new health and safety officer, and I don't know if you knew the answer earlier, Mr. Pitts, but how many people are employed by the wastewater treatment?
Yeah, so I don't have.
Does the city, sorry for interrupting.
No, you're fine.
Does the city have a health and safety officer for the city? Or are there, are there one or two already?
I don't believe, I honestly don't believe we do.
I mean, a lot of companies that I deal with in the day job, there might be one or two for a couple hundred employees that handle health and safety for a whole large factory or business.
Yeah.
Not one per each department necessarily.
I, I mean, I can't, I can't speak on that, but, yeah.
My opinion, sure, I would think that the city should hopefully have one for the whole city that handles all the health and safety or the OSHA compliant type activities.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, I mean, we're dealing with the same issues that were just discussed with the previous one. I'm sure everyone's going to have the same questions. The funding source, how much, and who's currently doing it, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. So like, like I said, current person that's doing it is our wastewater treatment plant manager and our, our chief, our plant maintenance supervisor. As far as having a safety officer for the city, I mean, I, we don't, I don't believe. I'm almost positive we don't. We're trying to implement one at the plant for safety reasonings. I mean, that's not to say that we shouldn't have one, but, for the city, but, but.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brian Huth?
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Mine's more of a comment than a question, but when I came onto council and public utilities was given to me as a committee, I spent the afternoon with Alex and Tony down at the plant, and I'm sure they would welcome any of you who have not been there yet to go down. It is truly an impressive thing, and, and it is a plant. It is, it is not a department, per se. It's an operational plant with live microbiomes feeding on the things and all the things. But to have all the things and the things that are way above my biological, yeah, academics. So that to say, this would be an area that I would want to have those precautions more so than maybe the auditor's office or the treasurer's office because of the different machinery and hazmat and all of the things in order. So if you would like to go see the plant and take a tour, I'm sure they would love to, to show you their employees, the things they have going, all of the methods and methodology that they do. It's truly impressive.
Mrs. Creamer?
Once again, like a job description, and what would the qualifications be for this individual?
So this one, I know you need, you have to have a certification within safety. I can't remember the degree of the certification. I can bring the job description. It's already made up and everything for both positions. I can even bring it next week. I know it's on a work session, but.
So if, if it's in this role, this individual is going to be responsible for those binders and all the rules and regulations. So if something's identified, that there's an issue, you know, these employees, does he address the employees based on what's in those binders? Or is it, you know, the organizational structure? Or does he report it to the plant manager? And the plant manager would then, you know, touch base with the employees? How's that structure all going to lay out? Because, you know, that's going to, that's going to be very important in the hierarchy of like deficiencies that have been identified. Who's going to be the sole responsibility, you know, who's responsible for getting it fixed? It's going to be the plant manager.
Yes.
But is he going to have people on board, have people engaged to fix what needs to be fixed? And how does he go about doing that? Would be my concern.
Yeah, so I will check with Tony on that. I have a feeling I know the answer, just because I know how things are run down there. I haven't checked with him exactly how it would work, per se, but my guess is that the safety officer would go to the plant manager, okay, with the safety concern and issue. And during the project list meeting, depending on how severe the safety issue is, during that project list meeting, it would be talked about and discussed there. And if it wasn't handled within that list meeting, I believe it would more than likely be an incident. So that's how I perceive it going. I need to make sure and check with him to make sure that that's correct. And if it's different than that, then I will let you guys know, but.
So based on those two binders you have that you stated, the plant manager and the plant maintenance supervisor, it's their responsibility now. So I would, I would believe that everything is up to, you know, everything's acceptable right now, current state. So this individual then would, his day-to-day role would just be to oversee, keep digging, you know, if everything's compliant and everything's within specs and regulation, what does a day look like for this individual? You know, is he just going to sit in his office and flip through the binders that have already been reviewed by the plant manager? I mean, I'm just trying to get a better understanding, like, how this is gonna?
Yeah, so I envision, so down at the plant, we have a work order system that is ever-evolving. So once you complete, and everybody down there, they have their own tablets. It's called FIX. And once you complete a work order, you're automatically sent a new work order and where you're supposed to go and what you're supposed to do. I have a feeling that this person would have access to FIX, have an account where they can see where everybody's at within the plant, and go and inspect where they're at to make sure everything is compliant, safety-wise. I mean, you're not going to spend your entire day in one specific section of the plant. I mean, you may be there for 30 minutes, you may be there for an hour, then move on to another section. And like Councilwoman Brian Huth had said, I mean, it's not, I mean, it can be dangerous working under the plant. I mean, you're talking about, I mean, just, these tanks are massive, right? And I mean, God forbid you fall into one. I mean, Jesus, so it, I would imagine you would just inspect areas that the operators and mechanics are located at within the plant, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. So in, in this legislation, it said that the civil service commission approved this position as of August 12 of 24. So I take it that the, the safety officer was needed a year, almost a year ago, and you're just coming to us now?
Yes, I am coming to you now, realistically timing. I didn't want you, I mean, I just, it's realistically just timing. It was just bad times to take it, so, last year, so.
But you really wanted this position filled last year?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
It's been budgeted for since, I believe, 2023, so.
Okay, so this position is funded as well, you're saying, is in the budget?
Correct.
All right, so in the interest of time we're running along, so we're going to move this ahead because we're going to give this discussion anyway. You can bring information next week, but it's not going to, it's, most discussion is going to take place the next committee meeting, next work session. So if you just want to wait till then, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for Rules and Courts. And finally, we have Mr. Lewis with Finance. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Wanted to be, I wanted to get this over with. Yeah, so nothing for you. Thank you, Mr. Packley. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, please prepare an ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the 2101 wastewater treatment fund. A gate replacement for $196,000, I'm assuming that's the front gate.
Up at Federal, yes, the Riverside, so.
Yep. New equipment of $402,000. And this is you, this is, money is appropriated to be used to federal gate replacement project and to purchase a new camera truck for sanitary line investigations, which coincide with the projects that you were talking about earlier. We pipe the lines, investigate, find out where the breaks are, and then we can start to do further research.
Correct.
Are there any questions about any of that?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. So with this truck with the camera to inspect the pipes, we are not going to have to contract out to other people? So in the long run, this should save us money?
Correct, that is.
And the equipment is easily fixable and replaceable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was the exact reason why that's there, so.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Question, sorry.
Yes.
Do already have the employees operate the truck?
Yes, so, yes.
No new employees?
No, not for this one. I do want to make one clarification. There will be another piece of legislation in the following work session, so this is probably not going to be able to go next council meeting because, well, technically it could, but the next one will go to public utilities, environmental, because we will have to go out to bid for the gate replacement project, so. So we're missing a piece of legislation to go out to and receive bids for that one.
Is this just an entrance gate, like, to the facility for security?
No, these are huge gates that, so when it rains, wastewater treatment department's responsibility is to go out and shut these gates manually.
Oh, you're talking the gates that.
The gates that close.
Overflow.
And flood downtown, correct.
Flood downtown.
Yes.
Do they still have to at any point, which is a little off, like, if we have a lot of flooding, do they ever reduce anything to the river and then report that? Do we have to ever do that?
At the plant?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep, they're called SSOs.
Does that happen there?
Sanitary, sanitary sewer overflow.
And that's because you have such a surge, things are flooding, and then they, you actually reduce it into the river?
Correct, and that is because of, I and I, I don't want to get too technical, but essentially, the plant, at the plant, we have, we can have around 20, 25 million gallons a day of flow capacity at the plant. When we exceed that, we have to discharge out into the river. When we exceed that, we have to discharge out into the river and report it to the EPA. Doesn't happen all the time, but every single time it does happen, we document it and make sure that, we report it. And that's one of the things that we're trying to work on, um, when we increase rates.
Try not to do that.
Exactly, and that's why we try, we increased rates, that's why Wellman, Midill, Commonwealth, things of that nature are coming forward now.
The larger pipe size is gonna have the capacity throughout the city, just having that larger capacity.
Yeah, cause, so when it rains, water infiltrates into your sanitary sewer, and we see that rainwater down at the plant. While it's not made to take rainwater, it's made to take sewage from your homes and things of that nature. So that's why our plant reaches capacity and we overflow. We're trying to eliminate that.
Can we get fined for we do that? Or is there, or is there at some point we could get fined?
You only.
Or is this done, this is how everyone does it all over?
This is how everyone does it all over. You're only fined if you do not comply with what the EPA mandates you to do. So if you don't report it and they find out, for example, God forbid.
And we've, uh, we.
Julie, you don't have your microphone on?
Sorry. And, and we've never had a problem or issue as far as we report it, we've never been in trouble, we're, we're doing everything by the books currently, and we've been compliant.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next one. Please pray an ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the 1414 Collection System Improvement to the following account, sanitary pipe repairs, $705,617 for Wellman, Midill, Commonwealth Sanitary Sewer Improvement Projects. Is there anything you wanna add to that, Mr. Pitts?
Nope, that's pretty much it.
Any questions that anybody has? Please pray an ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the 1406 Wastewater Treatment Capital Improvement, uh, to the following account, $180,000, and these are to use for first media replacement project. That we might need an explanation on.
Okay. So this, this also, this project was also a part of the rate study from last year. This is just the phase one of this project. We're going to have to do it in multiple phases because it's such an expensive project.
Oh, it's filter, I said first, I'm sorry. Makes a lot more sense with the word filter, but go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I was like, first media project, what is that?
No, it's just, it's just basically how we treat the sewage. Um, it's, you, you have this disc of media, it's, it, it treats your sewage.
Yeah.
We'll just, unless if you have specific questions, I can get into the technical stuff.
I'm good.
Yeah, we're, it's.
In, in the 1,400 fund for everybody, that is based off of our sewer rates. Those are our sewer rates, when we make collections from everybody that, from the county and from us, it goes in the 1,400. So when you see 1,400, this is them appropriating dollars that we get from those sewer bills.
Ed, I have a question of Mr. Pitts.
Sure.
Um, the quote, I have page one of three and page three of three. I don't have page two of three.
Nice cut, Mr. Lewis.
I will send that out to all of you, I'm not sure how that happened. Um, I had a bit of tech, technical difficulties with these legislation requests, huh?
Ed, I need to talk to you about that.
I know, with the, yeah, with the reasons, yeah.
I didn't wanna bring it up in the meeting, but Ed, you should know that there is no reason for emergencies on this. Alex was out of town Friday, and I didn't get in contact with him today, so I need to get with him to find out what the emergencies are.
I already signed one on accident.
That's okay, that's okay, we'll fill him in.
Lost my name out.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Mr. Pitts, now you're gonna get a talking to by Ms. Roland.
I, I.
It won't happen again.
I, that's fine, that's fine. I got it, that's.
Well, they all said expedite the bidding process. When I talked to Kristen about it, she tried to contact you Friday, but you were out of town.
Yeah, it's.
It's just technicality.
Yeah, and they're all, the reasoning is all pretty, they're all pretty similar anyway. It's, I'll, I'll get it in there. I don't know what happened, I, so, but.
Well, I think you're done tonight, aren't you?
I don't know, am I?
I don't see any more on here.
I think you're good to go. All right, that was, that was good. All right, thank you.
But we will be making sure you have that conversation with Ms. Roland.
I will, don't worry, I will, thank you.
All right. Um, the next piece I have is please prepare legislation appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the Park and Rec Capital Improvement Fund to the following accounts, Capital Improvement Project. And this is to pay for a tractor for ball field preparations, which is amazing, thank you Parks, and new AEDs for all parks and recreations facilities. Are there any questions? Seems pretty cut and dry, I know the tractor will be useful so we can maintain some nice ball fields. All right, and will be on the agenda for next week. And thank you, Mr. Pedro, for sitting through all that.
He already did.
Oh, he's there.
Oh, he's, congrats.
Please prepare an ordinance to appropriate from the unappropri, appropriate balance of the General Fund Arbitrator Services Contracts, this is paid for legal fees, this related to the recent contracts with all of our unions?
Some of it, yes.
All right, well, now you gotta come up.
Yes.
You can go right there. So some of this is based off our union negotiations, what were the other things, are they?
Um, if we have other personnel issues that might need handled because we don't, yes.
Yes. Means that we can't necessarily say right here, but they are related.
Yes.
So what would the cost difference be, I mean, of that $50,000, how much would it then for contracts and how much would that for others?
I'm not sure, because we're still doing negotiations, so I, we're not even billed for everything yet.
So I'll, I'll speak.
So I don't really know.
I'll speak a little bit, cause, cause I can speak more freely than she can. So you're talking about union negotiations, you're talking about any kind of grievances we have, we have any kind of complaints, anything at all that would be personnel-related, and this would be ongoing throughout the city, so it.
I just wonder, like, between contracts versus other, thank you.
Um, please prepare legislation authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Maslin enter into one-year contract before, be, between the Board of Commissioners of Stark County, Ohio, and the City of Maslin for the housing of City of Maslin codified ordinance prisoners. Okay, so essentially what we have to do is we have to go into agreement with the county that if we were to prosecute or undergo prosecution of someone under a Maslin code, we are paying the county to hold the prisoner. Correct. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out on some deep water, and Edmund can.
You got it so far.
If we were to prosecute under county code, we're in the clear on the payment of that.
Certainly our position, Councilman, yeah. They may disagree, but yeah, I believe there's a good foundation among that.
So, this is when we, if we pick somebody up and they're being prosecuted under Maslin codified, you know, our laws, then we have to pay to be housed, is all this is for, yeah.
Interesting nuance here, that we might wanna discuss in the future?
Not tonight.
What if we just cite them under both state and Maslin code, and then they have to house them anyway?
That sounds extremely engaging.
But, let's discuss that later.
Yes, to Mr. Gregg.
I just wanna mention, I know that, you know, whenever possible, we cite them under Ohio Revised Code, and when that's the case, we don't pay for their housing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very rare, I believe, that we cite them under city code.
It is a rarer instance, correct.
Thank you.
All right. Please prepare legislation authorizing the City of Maslin Law Director to enter an agreement with the Village of Navarre, to enter into a one-year agreement with them, it's gonna be $15,000, where we will be the prosecutor for them. Um, and this started January 1st, and will go through December 31st. Questions? Yes, Ms. Harwood Smith.
Is this the same amount that we've been charging for multiple years? Have we considered?
We've so.
Same.
Mr., I don't know.
I, I don't know, Councilman.
I will say, though, we did get a really nice packet, and I always like this, this is, I, I will have to give Mr. Meyer some credit for this annual report. It shows where, um, all the, uh, different filings within our court system are from, and we can look in here, pull this up, if I can get it to separate. City of Navarre. Do you see the number for the overall?
It looks like they.
It looks like they had 215 traffic tickets last year go through our court, 43 other criminal actions go through our court. Those two sections would be us. It looks like they are about 1.63% of our total cases overall.
We're getting $15,000 for 288 total people that we've put through, so. Yeah, same amount, but in, with very low usage, is I guess what I'm getting at. They only put 288 cases in front of our courts, so, for whatever that's worth.
Well, that still doesn't really, it'd be interesting to look at that closer and see, like, is 1.6 of our total costs?
No, 1.6%.
1.6% of our total cost is from them, as long as our total cost does not exceed 15,000, then I'm good. But if our total cost per cases of what they're averaging, then maybe we should consider charging them more.
Well, for the prosecutor's side, not for the court's side. If that makes sense, cause we can't charge them for the court.
Right.
We only charge them.
And the court's side, when they're doing that, that money goes into a state fund, right? Or does that, we don't really get to that?
That's a whole nother ball of wax, it's gonna be a whole nother night.
Okay.
Mr. Markham.
Just food for thought, maybe not this year, but going into next year, $15,000 divided by 288 is $52 a case, which is a pretty sweet deal.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we consider that next year, when we talk to their village and come up with a contract, but right now I don't see a reason to change too much.
May I, Chairman Lewis, just one brief comment, I know we're wrapping this up. I, I don't wanna give the impression at all that these contracts aren't negotiated, they're just not handled by me, they're handled by, uh, Law Director Richard himself personally. And so he, the numbers, with the deviation, I'm not sure, I know it's a process, cause we don't provide, I don't believe prosecutorial services for Myers Lake, because they haven't reached an agreement, so I just wanted to correct that, I had a kind of a flip response back there. I mean, they are negotiated contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, it's an out, there's an algorithm that kind of calculates the price right now.
I would assume so.
But I've never seen that algorithm, so I'm not, I don't wanna put words in the Law Department's mouth, I don't wanna speak for the Law Department. That's just how it's been pitched to me as to how these numbers come up. But I will say 50-some dollars a case, $52 a case is a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
And it might be worth considering going forward, but maybe not this year.
Well, and I agree with you, we're about to have another one here where we're doing the same thing for Beach City, $6,000 for the year. If this is a concern of ours, we could definitely bring it up with Justin, Mr. Richard. Um, I just don't know if there's anything we can do about for 2025, we're already in April, and we're trying to cover all, like, we're already in second quarter, so I don't know if we can adjust it now. So it'd be something we'd have to explain to Mr. Richard that we would like to see these maybe become a little richer.
That one's about $111 a case.
Yeah.
It's 54 cases.
Yeah.
Please make a transition.
Um, this next, please, please prepare legislation authorizing Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Maslin enter into a one-year contract with Standard Plumbing and Heating, for the City of Maslin for the Purpose of Preventative Maintenance Program for Air Conditioning and Heating. Do we have an idea of the cost of this contract?
So I apologize I did not, um, attach the contract, because I'm still working with them on the details of the contract, because right now we're installing new HVAC system in this building, so I was trying to negotiate with them on what would really be needed, since the equipment is brand-new and when we would have to start it. But even with the equipment being brand-new, you still have to do preventative maintenance on things. So I would say, I know it's under 15,000, I wanna say it's between maybe 10 and 15,000 for the year, for, for the PMs. I just don't have the figure, and so it's up to you guys if you want to, I, I should have the contract next week, so I can get it over to you if you wanna, um, bring it forward next week for the first read, um, and then we can discuss it more at the next, or if you wanted to table it, I mean, that, that's up to you as well. I just didn't have it, because I was still going back and forth, forth with them on the actual contract. We had one last year, it, it's, it's something that we've always had with, with Standard, but like I said, because our equipment was new, I wanted to go over those details with them more, because of the equipment being new.
I'll go ahead and sign it, put it on the agenda, but we won't pass it until we see a contract.
Of course.
If that makes sense. Ms. Harwood Smith?
Do they cover, like, all our buildings, or, I mean, does this contract, it starts every building?
City owns, they're doing the maintenance on it?
Um, so this contract.
They had any maintenance on them?
I'm gonna double-check on this, with this contract, I believe just covers this building, and I believe, um, the building that I'm, I'm in over at the Huntington Bank.
Uh-huh.
Um, but there are, um, services that are provided at other ones, but I believe they keep them separate, but I'll, I'll double-check on that with the contract.
Okay.
This was primarily for this building.
And are they the ones who presented the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Brian Huth.
Is it a calendar here?
Yes.
January?
Well, that's what I'm working on with them, because of how they come out in the spring and fall, it may get pushed back to the fall and start then, because of our equipment[1705.53]